Let's go ahead and call our work session meeting to order. Thanks for braving storming. First up, our special programs director Lynn is here with us tonight. Have the floor.
I have something that I'm going to talk about in places of power. Guys, have enough? Alright, so one of the things that I have taken on in this year is the online academy, so DHLA. And we just recently assembled. By purview, so currently there's about sixty-three kids in the K through twelve programs. We're looking at, we're starting to look at different online platforms to use. Our license with Edgenuity is going to expire by twenty-four. So next school year, so we'll start looking for other programs to. And looking at more ways to be competitive with them.
That's something you think that's going to be a. Or gone conclusion is shopping around for different platform, or is that?
Yes.
We got a real sweetheart deal with Edgenuity. That was a couple of years ago. Deanne with that, she, she, she's a good negotiator. So but it is now we have the opportunity to really look and saying, well, at this level, it's likely we'll want to continue to offer. If it's an option, you need. What makes the most sense? Are there other platforms that that both, you know, maybe perform better as well as the cost consideration? Was that? Did was that deal? Tied to the fact that we using Edgenuity only in bridges?
Yeah, I mean, that was the public opinion at the start of pandemic that we had done. And so it was more like. Well, and they said, okay, we'll work your deal. I think it would be a great deal that is super, super cheap. It was definitely worth the money minds. It certainly seems like it's only an okay product.
That's developer terms. General movement gets you way behind.
Yeah.
And so. That's why. So we're shopping.
So we're shopping. And then like we said, we're looking at ways we can be more competitive with the other online. So so now we can help like kids in the HHS instead of running. And we'll keep working on that one. We received a specialized grant from ODE for equipment and supplies. It's about twenty thousand dollars. And so we're, we have to use it by the end of June. So we are looking at ways that we can spend that. Our classmates and friends will put supplies a day. Whether it be. Equipment type stuff, facilities. Instead of program. What's the process that you guys are using to determine? How to send it? Right now. I'm just kind of opening it up and letting the teachers decide if there's stuff that they want, you know, for their programs. They know their programs best. And right now they know their kids best. And I have some extra money that we can play with. So let them get what they want.
Um, no, but real quick, I'm rewinding.
Okay. Rewind.
Yeah. Do we know how many? Youth we have in our district that are attending other online charities or districts? Like, so what's the capacity that we could possibly bring in if we were to create something that?
We, we have estimates. I don't have the number with me. So we get reported from the SD. They send us homeschool numbers. So that's one. And then we have to do interdistrict transfers for kids living here who are attending like Baker Web Academy or connections or anything like that. And so I, you know, I think total, we're looking at. I would say between one hundred and two hundred. Kids out there. Now, some of them have been like homeschoolers. They've been lifelong. So it's not any sort of change. It's like, this is just what we're doing. And even similar with some of the online academies, there's a kind of a subgroup of kids who like. I want to go do this. And it was connected to the pandemic and those sorts of things. And there's another group of like, and probably more with the homeschoolers, this is just how we've been doing it the whole time. And so they're not really motivated to say, well, this is working. We have those connections, even if Brookings offers online. We've been doing that.
Be interesting to see what the. Pre-COVID homeschool numbers look like in the post. So we've been kind of like the age of. How many, the potential captures. Of we have back into the issue.
So we think it's possible to.
I would say probably in my mind, yeah.
Oh, when you were referring to online, I was separate, but I think that's also. Audience.
Yeah. And that, that was, that's a separate. Kind of trap separate. So we, we know about, because we, we live at the private school, federal grants. So we can know about how many kids per grade and that sort of thing. And the assumption is most kids in that school. Are resident, the district, not all of them. But the homeschoolers are ones that in Oregon, you have the registers, homeschoolers, you go to the SD. So they have some, you know, reasonable number and they, they, they send that out if you got it to the districts. So we could gather that certainly as a follow-up to say, you know, here's the different groups of, here's the change. I think that's probably the bigger question. What's changed over the last two or three years, you know, in terms of those members and homeschools gone up? But I don't think it's gone up dramatically.
Well, as I said, if we, we have those ones. Yeah. And then we put together a strategic. I don't want to say marketing plan, but strategic.
Percentage of.
Communication plan.
Okay.
There it is.
No, you know, it's been quite a year now that my last job was at school, but. I mean, it would have been phenomenal. She would have had specific thoughts that she. If she was much further along than asked for. Than what the school district offers. So. I think that if we're wanting to be competitive. Offering, you know, resource classes that we don't necessarily have the resources to offer.
Or Japanese or Japanese class. I take that absolutely.
For special education. So we are working on our transition program. Those eighteen, twenty-one year old kids on modified diplomas, those two qualifications. Graduated from high school. Whether they earned a diploma or whether they have a certificate of completion, they're entitled to the same school in twenty-one six services. So from eighteen to twenty-one, we have a transition program right now. It ensues out of the high school. And it's kind of just run through with the regular life skills program. So we're looking to expand that. And move it into its own space, which we're, we're looking, they're kind of coming up with ideas. But move it into its own space. So it's a true transition program. We're setting these up just for job skills. But we're helping them find. Real life skills that they're using in their own or if they're talking about other music. Need more supports. Probably what we're running on. We're looking to do that. So we're looking for options to move it out of the high school. In its own, own building. So about six or seven kids. And, and that's about what's projected for the next two months. Do you think that if we were to have shared facilities? You might be able to get more students? In that, in that target range, are there more students that are?
Say, well, I should make sure a bigger audience up.
Right, yeah. Is a student could be taking advantage of building that art? There might be. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking past you again because she, she knows, she knows some of the population better than us. She's kind of. Yeah. So there might be a few kids who are not coming back just because they don't want to be associated with the high school. Right. And if it was in a site that wasn't connected to the high school. They might come back in. It's not a full day program or it wouldn't necessarily need to be a full day program. Because it's transition. Trying to tie it in with work skills.
So he said that. Students between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one have already received their diploma or a government. And do this? Is that any student? You know?
They have to have either a modified diploma or a certificate of completion.
Okay. These English students who have one certificate.
Yeah, these are kids with more significant needs than just.
Are, so you should transition. Are, is there, is there any? This management tied to?
They, they would still fall under, the life skills teacher would still be their case manager. And they would still have to have a yearly ID to be like. Do now, like really maybe it just changes and we bring in outside agencies to help. We need those units that will support them as much as we can to get them ready for. Life value. The, some of the good news in, in, you know, in a, in a time when everybody's struggling to find. Employees and, and specialized teachers and, and everything else. We have some good news is that we have two speech and language technologists that are, that are employees of the district. Instead of contractors. I don't know about both of them. For these districts, we had to be the online. More kind of online person, presence learning type thing.
Yeah, speech is a question. Of anything, that seems like a big person to watch and listen.
Helped you for quite some time. Or did you like?
They were contracted. One of them was formerly an employee. She actually went to the ESD and was providing this service. It's come back. I wasn't sure about the company. But this is the first year where we've had. Two TV that are on again since, for at least several years.
We're super excited about that. And like I said, there's a national shortage. Nationally shortage of specialized teachers. And we're not immune to that, but it's not unique. And so the folks we have, we work so hard. While we only have a two certified. Specialized teachers, at least one or two in each building. But we have someone emergency qualifications. We're providing services and doing an amazing job. And then the IAs said that, you know, we've been doing a tremendous job to support our kids. To make sure they didn't help in the services that we provide. How many licenses? How many licenses? One, we have. One at, okay, I have to go through the buildings. One at Case School is licensed.
Fully licensed or just licensed position?
Like a special ed certified. Okay, so one at Case School, one's emergency certified, and then one's a long-term staff. At AMS, we have. One who's licensed, I'm looking at, making sure I got my people. We have one and a half, right? I was just going to say. The life skills teacher goes between the middle and high school. So she's also certified. And then we have a long-term staff covering for the other resource position. And then at the high school, we have. One and a half. Well, actually. Actually, too. Linda Eller came out. Yep, bless her heart. Doing a great job. Let me say, we know that this proportionally, we can't go very specific, Lynn, this is a lot of that. What do you mean by that? Like in comparison to you are? So that's based on race. And so we have more Native Americans qualified. In that category, not versus and, and else, but just a higher number of kids who are their first. Compared to other races, things.
That's.
In what? Specific learning disability? Under that category.
And, and one of the challenges with that, so it's a federal requirement designation. And, and the math, which breaks down as you get down to smaller districts. Because it really, it, it works in larger districts. Where they're looking for trends, make sure you're not over and identifying, but the district our size with one kid. Can make the difference between, you know, being, you know, triggered or not. And so but anytime that happens, you know, the district, they look and say, is there any issue with the program? Are we investors? It's just kind of. You know, luckier than that.
Do you know what percentage of burn? Like all in special ed?
Twenty-five percent may have burned foundation.
Yeah, I don't have that information.
But this is just for, of all the kids identified with specific learning disability. There's enough more kids, Native American, that trigger that just for that. So it's not a measure of. How many of our new kids are also identified with this.
The rush to.
No, well, thank you very much for having me, guys. Nice to meet you too. You've been here since.
You actually met her. But I know there is a lot of.
Did I meet her at the beginning?
When was the beginning of the year?
What year is that?
I know that feeling. Living here was like three days ago.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. So yes, I have been here since the beginning.
They're all here.
Awesome. Two days. All right, thanks, guys.
All right.
A little bond surveys next.
Yes, this is online. Can you hear us, Jao?
Yeah, I can hear you.
This is Jao, head of N R Nelson Research. He is the person at the company that we hired to. Well, I'll let him take it over because he's going to talk about what the work they did. So this is about kind of helping to inform the board as to. Do we want to consider moving forward? Okay, take it away, Jao.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk you through a. What we call a top line report. And then I'll, I'll take you through a PowerPoint. And I think it's instructive. To. See what a top line report is so you can understand the flow and sort of the, the mechanics of the survey and, and why we do what we do. We fielded your survey between Monday. December second, Friday, December sixth. It was a combination of live phone and we invited participants to an online panel. We got three hundred and fifty-eight respondents. Which in a community of your size, district of your size, I felt pretty good about. Margin of error at five point two percent. Your subgroups are going to have a larger error rate, but five point two overall. For three hundred and fifty-eight respondents, I think is a pretty healthy sample. For your, your district. And I think. I'll start here at the beginning. We typically, I, I won't go over the numbers really per se here initially. I'm more interested in just kind of dialing you into the rhythm of the survey and, and the sequencing and, and why we, why we go about it how we do. We do ask some introductory questions. These will have bearing. On how people respond down the line, but we like to kind of take people's temperature initially about. Issues related to the school district. So we are sometimes ask an operation and performance question. And get people's attitudes about. The condition of the, the physical buildings and assets of the district. And that's sort of a way to get people in the survey ta- taking frame, but also you get valuable information because it. It starts to, to color how people will respond down the line. This. Question here you see called initial ballot. This is really where the rubber hits the road. On any survey, this is kind of the real deal. And that is, we, we have to preface this as concisely. And as neutrally as possible, just giving the facts. And being very careful to use language that does not. Bias in any way. And this is so you can get an out of the box feel for where you are at. Right out of the gate, when people are just given the facts. This, this is the. In, in my opinion. One of the two or three most important questions of the survey because it's just unbiased. Here's, here's the facts. Where are you on this issue? And everything will be gauged in relation to this question. So number Q three is what we call the initial ballot. And, and we, we typically put that near the front of the survey because we don't want things before it to start to color how people might answer that question. For a pre-bond survey, as like you were considering. We sometimes do a project priority queue or a priority scale. And you know, the part of this is to understand how, how respondents feel about various projects that the district might be considering. That felt appropriate in this survey. And just sort of as a matter of, you know. Protocol. We, we give people an even number of responses. So, so we do it on a four scale. Because I don't like giving people a middle category to sort of park their vote. I, I, I wouldn't really want to force people to choose is a high priority or low priority. And so we go on a four scale with four being the highest priority, one being the lowest. Typically, you know, we've done this long enough. I advise any district, if you're, if your project's sixty, seventy percent, it needs to be in there, no problems. High fifty is still pretty solid. You really start to have to do some. You know, you, you kind of take your life into your own hands on things under fifty. Fifty percent is how I put it because your, your, your bond often is only as, as strong as your, your weakest component. And so. I really advise people to be careful if your, your combined three and four is under fifty percent on a project because. Then people start to, you know, weigh cost benefits. So we asked a number of priority questions. Again, I'm going to go through a PowerPoint. So I, I'm not, I'm not going to go through the numbers on, on this particular. Document. I, I will do that in just a bit, but you get a sense here. We asked on a quite, a few projects. And how people would prioritize those. We, we added a verbatim. Here because David really wanted to get. Feedback in people's own words. If there were things that the district was not considering that were on people's minds. You can see here, we had a smattering of very low frequency responses. Most people unsure, just didn't know, but we did have an issue here for, for a verbatim. And again, I'll discuss that in the PowerPoint. We do like to get a sense of just whether people are willing to pay more. To address infrastructure capital needs. This is not a tricky question. I just, I just want to get, I, I just really, it's the no response. That I'm really interested in to see if we're going to hit. A brick wall. On this and, you know, in this particular response at twenty-six percent really did not give me that much pause. Pause. We typically add a follow-up question to say, okay, how much? And again, I'm really, you know, I'm looking at this, this first response category at nothing. To me, that's the most instructive because again, I want to know if we just have insurmountable headwinds on, on a tax proposal. We ask an agree disagree series. I will say that this particular series of questions is meant to introduce bias. And so people say, well, is this a push-pull or not? It, it is meant to introduce and invoke an emotional response. And so what, what it forces people is to, to consider the project, some of the messaging that goes around it. And would I support it, you know, if it was in a bond levy or would I support a levy that included this project? And it, you, you start to get to see, you know, projects that sort of make the cut. And how you might message them and projects that won't make the cut. And so the agree disagree. Is, I think, an important tool to get sort of an emotional response. To some of the messaging surrounding these, these projects. So we asked agree disagree questions. Again, I'll, I'll get in this in the PowerPoint. Looks like we asked about seven or eight of them. So our respondents, we were about fifty-three and a half percent female. This is now, keep in mind, you know, this is a survey. That is going to be really acclimated to your likely voters who go all the way down and vote on school board measures. So it is going to be skewed to an older demographic. That is just, that is just the reality. And a lot of communities, particularly small ones, of people that are actively voting in bond elections. And so. That's why I think these surveys are so important is because, you know, in your, your daily walk of life. You're talking to parents and to people that are actively connected to the school district. When the voter, the people that are really going to say yes or no on a money measure are largely not those people. That you're interfacing with. They are largely going to be on your, your forty-five plus. And people whose kids are probably already out of school. And so it is, is, it is a, it's a different demographic than the people that, that you interface with on, on school issues. So this is going to skew a little older. As you can see, we had about thirty-nine percent of respondents have some connection to the district, whether it was a child or a grandchild in the district. Most of our respondents owned their own property, therefore they would pay the tax. We asked a demographic question, whether you believe the Brookings Harbor School District spends taxpayer money wisely. I'll get into why that's important as we in our, in our PowerPoint. And then your, your plurality of voters. Which are largely going to be your, your sixty-plus as your four-four voter. That is your high propensity, high frequency. These are the people that I know will be. Cheating in a box on a school bond levy. So that, that's a little bit about the demographic profile of this survey. Now I'm going to get into the. PowerPoint. Again, we, we did talk a little bit. Again, we were fielding. First week of December, three hundred and fifty-eight respondents, margin of error at five point two percent. Our survey objectives were to, you know, after working with David and DeeDee. Really, five things. Determine the willingness of your local residents to support a twenty-year, ten million dollar construction bond measure. That's, you know, a number one. Identify community prioritization. Around on those projects that the district identified. Identify the willingness of voters to support a, a property tax increase of any level. Identify the effectiveness of messaging. In support of the, of the measure. Now, we didn't get too far into the messaging weeds, but we got enough to start to form some ideas. And then identify a potential roadblocks for voter support. So on the Q three that I told you was our initial ballot and our benchmark question. So your initial support level was at fifty-seven and a half percent. So it, it is my, you know, a professional opinion, you've, you've got something to work with here. Obviously, I, I. Really like seeing numbers, you know, at sixty percent, but fifty-seven and a half percent, you figure there's a five percent margin of error. There are some things in here that make me think that the community. Would support a thoughtful proposal. There, there's definitely every indication that that. You, you could have a, get earned passage of a viable proposal. So your initial support is at fifty-seven and a half percent. I would say that that's fairly strong. It's, 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 it's. You know, I'd love to see it a little higher, but it, it's not a bad starting place. What I like also is that your strong oppose. Excuse me, your strong support exceeds your strong oppose. That is your poll. Or opposites because we're asking people. Or opposites because we're asking people, do you strongly or somewhat support, do you strongly or somewhat oppose? So your strong support over strong suppose is basically thirty five to twelve, it's, it's three X. And I think that's pretty good. Um, that means that the, the intensity of strong opposition is uh pretty modest, and so that, that's an indicator I like. Um, your highest support. Levels come from uh parents with kids in school. Uh, it's predominantly female. Uh, renters and one of four voters now. I don't love that. Because uh. Um, because conversely, let's talk about where the, the lowest support now granted, it's the lowest support, it's still not bad. Uh, so your support among men. Just over fifty one percent. Uh, it's the four of four that I'm really focused on here, the support is at just over fifty three. Percent, and I think that that's going to end up being a truer indicator of where. You actually are because we know that they're the ones that are going to show up. And then age sixty plus, a little lower still, uh, at just under fifty one. So there are some things in there I like, there are some things in there that give me pause. But overall, again, I stick to my original conclusion, I, I do think. That you've got room to work here uh to toward a, a measure that will pass. Um. Let me talk a little bit about operation and performance. Uh, the perception here, um. I, I thought was, it. It's obviously underwater. And you got a uh, so ti- so typically, if we have somebody rate excellent or pretty good, that's a positive rating, fair or poor. We consider that a negative rating, and although that there are a number of people that consider it fair. Um, you're still underwater here by about twelve points on operation and performance among voters overall. And underwater even a little more among your higher propensity voters. And so that, that is, I, you know, I think that's one thing you've got to be cognizant of it, it does create a little bit of drag. Uh, when you're asking people to support. A tax measure. Um, David asked me to go back and look at a number of the, the smaller sized districts. I would say that most districts that I've seen in smaller communities kind of tend towards a band of. Um. Five points either way, uh, so there are five points above water to five points below water. Um, I, I think that, that Brookings Harbor is of. Uh, a little, it, it's, it's a little more underwater than I, I've seen with, with most small districts, so it's just, it's something to be cognizant of. Um, the physical condition of the buildings and the uh, and, and facilities. Most people, a majority, uh, think that the condition of the, the buildings and facilities are pretty good. Now that differs, I think dramatically from what I saw with the staff survey who uh spend every day working i- in the, those buildings and. And the uh, the ratings were less generous, let's just say. But among your typical uh voter, uh, who you will be asking to support. Or to measure, um, over half think that the district. So facilities and, and buildings are in pretty good shape. Um, this one we asked is a demographic question. And that is uh, a fiscal responsibility question. And as do you, do you think? The district spends its money wisely. And basically this broke out into a, uh, basically a thirty thirty forty. Where you, you basically had thirty percent, in this case about twenty seven said yes. Um, thirty. Two said no. And about forty that were just unsure. Now, why is this important? Because in the cross tabs, if you think that the district spends your money wisely, eighty five percent. Of that subgroup uh supports the bond measure. Eight, I mean, it's a wa- eighty five percent, I mean, it's astronomical. If you don't believe that the district spends its money well. Um, thirty, you have thirty six percent support for a bond measure, so. That number was actually modest, more modest and actually a little higher than I would have expected. But um, you, you do see the stark difference between those who think that the money's, the district spends money well and those that don't. And then if you're unsure. Uh, fifty six percent uh of those respondents would have supported the bond measure. So I do think that there's some gold in here with respect to, um, you know, conveying a message, telling. Stories because I know the district has a, a positive story to tell about this. Um, that you could probably stand to win some converts. Over uh, from the no and unsure into the yes column, and that would probably be the heart, I, I would say that the, the highest ROI. That you could get from sort of a, a, a PR message standpoint, it with, with the highest assurance that that would translate into. Uh, positive votes or yes votes on, on a bond measure. Uh, here's a look at the priority projects, so there are three projects clearly that stand out that, that. I, I would say have no reservations about including them in any measure you wanted to do. Uh, the HVAC systems, uh, and we find this traditionally in. Districts around the state, those improvements are typically an easy sell because you are, you know, protecting. The investments that you've made in those buildings over the course of decades. And um, and so it, and that's reflected in the numbers. Um, you've also got a very high priority rate for the gym floor at Azalea. And the shelters at Calmy Opsus. And so those three projects uh tend. Did to rate very highly on the priority queue, I would have no reservations about including them in anything. Um, the high school commons, I just, I think people struggle to kind of conceptualize what that entails or what the benefits were. Uh, that was at about forty seven percent. Uh, the soccer field at Calmy Opsus was at forty four. Uh, the high school auditorium was at forty two. And the secretary office uh in the, in the parking lot of the, the high school, um, that was also at forty two. I think some of these, it was hard for people to conceptualize what the benefits were. Or why it might be needed, and so I, I think that um. I think that that might be reflected in the numbers a little bit. Um, but overall, you've got three projects here that I have no reservation about. And then you've got a handful here where I think you really have to um, uh, you know, sharpen your pencil on. Um. Again, re- remember, we asked the agree disagree question. Um, toward the, the, the latter half of the survey. Which is really intended to see, you know, do people's sentiments and their emotional sentiments about this really reflect the priorities that they just indicated? Uh, that was clearly the case with the uh HVAC systems, people are ready to support that. People are ready to support the gym floor at Azalea. Um, this is one where the expanded auditorium. Uh, seemed to rate better on the agree disagree than it did on the priorities queue. And so um, I. I think that that one is worth exploring. Um, and again, the outdoor shelters at Calmy Opsus, uh, we knew that that was considered a high priority. That also uh was reflected in the agreement that voters had that they would support a measure with that project. Um, the soccer field with bathrooms uh and locker room, I made a notation here, that this was. At forty three, this was your lowest ranking, and it was also upside down. Because uh, although forty three percent of respondents said that they would agree. Uh, to support a proposal with that, and at forty seven opposed. So I probably should have had some indicator, but you'll, you'll see it clearly on your top line report. Uh, that that, that response was actually upside down, you had more opposition than support. Um, I would draw your attention to this bottom line, um, this to me. When I say there, there's, there's a handful of questions that are just really, I think, more important than others. Um, this agree disagree that just simply is meant to identify voters. For whom they're just not going to support a measure if it, if it costs them something additional. And it's, it's not a reflection on the district, really, it's, it's a reflection of how people feel about their own personal economies. And um, that number came in at about thirty nine point four percent. And I, you know, that, that again informs my opinion that. At the district has something to work with because although thirty nine, you know, it's a little high. You know, that means that you've got sixty percent plus who um are certainly open to it, and so I think that it, it's. An indicator you've got room to work. Um, I do ultimately think um. You know, thirty nine point four is, is I, in my opinion, a workable number. Um, if it was in the mid forties. I would caution against anything, but it's not, um, and so I, I thought that that was pretty modest. And then again, we have the scale of what Brookings Harbor uh residents are willing to pay. And again, I'm looking at this red bar. And that is the people that aren't ju- just not willing to pay anything, and they, they say so, and that's just over twenty percent. Again, that is not. A formidable high number, uh, uh, we survey a lot of districts whose numbers here are. Are a lot higher than that, um, low thirties, high thirties. And so again, it informs my opinion that you. Uh, have room to work here. Um, you've got, I would say forty, I'm doing some math on the fly, um, thirty fifty seven, so you've got about. You've got about two thirds of your residents that are willing to pay something. About sixty seven percent that are willing to pay fifty dollars a year. And so that, that gives me an indication that you've got people. That are really. Are, are willing to support the district with the right proposal. Uh, I, I like, I like that number. Um, I, I will make sure that every slide that I had really. Captures this for you. What I call your, your key indicator, your tax indicators. And you know, your, your, it's, it's going to be a combination of, of what your proposal is, because again, your proposal is as strong as its weakest link. And then it's the indicators, you know, are people, do people feel like they're in a good enough position or feel good enough about the district to say, yes, I'll, I'll support more. So you got fairly positive numbers. Uh, but I, I do, again, I, I, I want to temper that by saying your highest frequency voters. Underperform here, they are a drag, and you've got to be cognizant of that. Um, and because I think that's going to be a truer reflection. Of where your electorate's going to be, so uh, I, I say here the top bullet, your high propensity voters provide some downward drag on the tax support. Um, your, so we'll start with the, you know, you have fifty three and a half percent of residents would support a property tax at some level. But only forty seven percent of high frequency. Uh, you've got sixty seven percent support of up to fifty dollars a year. But for your four of four voters, it's sixty, so you're noticing a trend here. And then you've got fifty seven point five percent support for your ten million dollar bond, but it's fifty three. Percent among your high frequency voters, so what I'm trying to illustrate here is. I think that's going to be a truer indicator, the people that, that show up are going to be. A little less optimistic than, than your, your overall population, but they, but we know that they're the ones that are going to show up. And then likewise, with respect to opposition. Uh, although the overall opposition to the bond was thirty one point six. Um, for four of fours, it was thirty six point one. And so you've got, um. Uh, again, I, I think I've made my point here that your four of fours. Are really your, your truest indicator, in my opinion, and you need to know where they're at. Um, just to, to the extent that we got into some message testing, and it, it was just brief, but you know, I consider the agree disagree series to. Uh, really start to give some messaging indicators. Um, protecting the community's investment. Uh, in to improve air quality and energy efficiency by replacing HVAC systems. You had sixty nine point three percent support. Um, I measured this number here in the right margin, I measure that against the baseline of fifty seven and a half, that's clearly. That moves people, it, it moves people. Uh, the fact that your kids and community should have the same quality school facilities that kids across the state have. Uh, sixty three and a half percent agreement. Again, that's six points better than your baseline, again, I think that that argument moves people. Uh, time to give our students a gym floor uh at Azalea that can be safely used, again. Uh, sixty two and a half percent. Uh, was agree, that's, you know, that's five points above your baseline. And then you've got a couple that are, I would say, a little below, um, but uh, the high school auditorium, I definitely think is a project worth considering. Uh, because you've got enough indication in there that it's a community priority. That I would definitely, um, um. I would definitely sharpen my pencil on that particular proposal. And then the, this is the only response that really kind of puzzled me a little bit because we had a lot of indication that. Uh, the shelters at Calmy Opsus were a priority, uh, but. Um, for some reason, this, this marker at fifty three point six percent support was just a little less than I would anticipate. I don't think that that diminishes the importance of that proposal. Uh, but I, you know, nonetheless, it, it, um. It was um, a, a lower testing message. And then again, we did ask people in their own words to identify uh projects or concerns or things that they noticed in the district. That could use, um. Uh, could be addressed with a bond measure, and most people just simply aren't connected enough to it to know, and that's, that's reflected. In the, in the fact that fifty eight percent of your respondents just weren't sure, or, or they couldn't identify anything. Um, to the extent that you had some concentration, you know, there, you know, again, this is very low frequency, it's only four percent. But safety. Security systems. Uh, so thanks for, for uh, safety for students. Faculty in the community. Uh, and then educational supplies and teaching materials. And then you had some cluster. Of three percent of respondents, and in the course of a. Three hundred and fifty eight, you know, sample survey, um, you know, that, that's going to be, you know, ten to twelve respondents. Uh, teachers, leaking roofs, uh, updated restrooms. Classroom sizes and an aquatic center for, for what that's worth. I think that one of the things that I noticed, um, because they. David kind of clued me into the, the staff responses. And um, there, 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 there are some parallels between these responses and the verbatims that were by staff, I mean, I clearly saw. Identified concerns with respect to uh roofing. And leaky roofs and shelters and inadequate plumbing and bathroom. Facilities, and my, my comment on those is, is that those. Those types of, uh, oh, and electrical. Those types of fixes generally are very, very, very popular with voters. Um, and so it's not my place to tell you what should be prioritized or not. I'm just uh, offering you my informed opinion that. If there were issues related to upgrades and electrical infrastructure, plumbing, or uh, things of the like, that. Typically goes over quite well. Um, and you know, if, if that's being considered, roofing is a, is a massive, uh, a very popular item, so. Those types of things that I saw identified by the staff. Um, usually resonate fairly well. Um, with uh, in, in money campaigns. So finally, just a handful of recommendations, um, I, I think you clearly. Uh, have an opportunity for success here, uh, I just didn't see it. Enough to, to tell me that, that it was, uh, but you were in a hopeless situation, you're clearly not, you, you, you clearly got some. Uh, real opportunity here. Um, I would, you know, I, I would say the, the district should consider sharpening a pencil a bit more. Like the, the proposal on the soccer field. Um, or it, Calmy Opsus, I believe, uh, when that, when that comes in at an upside down number. I just think that there's stuff like that where you're just kind of taking your life into your own hands. On this measure, uh, again, keeping in mind my maxim that uh, your, your measure is as strong as your weakest component. And if people will find fault, they will vote no, they will have no problem voting no, if there's something in there they don't like. Um, I do think that there's a sticky segment. Of voters who are tax conscious with negative dis- uh, views of the district performance. That um, makes this. I think going to have to be a, a real and a thoughtful endeavor. On your part because um, that, those numbers I think are just sufficient enough. Uh, where if that sentiment sort of catches wind on any particular election, I think it could be problematic. Um, so I, I recognize it, you, there, there's clearly that issue if you're a little underwater on operation and performance. And you've got um. More, more of your respondents than not thought that the district did not manage money well. Um, I think that you've got, uh, you've got a sticky issue there that you're, you're gonna have to be cognizant of. Um, I think that projects you, you consider could be really fit into four messaging buckets. Uh, one of which, of course, is protecting the community's investment in the schools. Uh, the safety and security of kids, uh, the faculty and community. Uh, giving kids the same quality facilities that uh, other kids have across the state. And then uh, the, 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 the simple notion of meeting community needs. And then, uh, the, 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 the simple notion of meeting community needs. Uh, uh, I think that those are, uh, uh, very um, saleable buckets and, uh, tho- that kind of stood out to me, um, uh, in the responses. And then finally, just a, a recommendation that I think, cause I think the highest yield for you is demonstrating financial uh, pro- good financial stewardship, um, because that, I, I'm just blown away by tha- that segment of that subgroup that, uh, says that the district spends its money. Well, you had eighty five percent support on your bond levy. So, you know, why not, you know, win a few converts there? So I, I just think that there's a highest ROI there. And then, um, and that's it. Um, uh, in terms of recommendations, um, and at this point, I am happy to answer questions.
All right. Question regarding the, you know, the, the response, um, district not managing money well. Did you guys don't ask follow-up questions to that or try to inquire as to the sentiment behind that? Why they felt that way? Is that correct?
Not, not in this particular survey. I mean, I, I think that the thing that, um, uh, verbatims, as we call them, verb- verbatim and open and are the most costly questions to administer in a survey. And so it really kind of feeds into, um, you know, are you getting bang for your buck on your survey? And so there's a point at which you just don't get enough from the information to justify the cost. So we, we already had a verbatim in there. And so, no, we did not ask a verbatim on the backend. If, if we were to, if we were to say do a messaging survey, you know, second, I, I might be inclined to wanna explore that a little further, but we did not on that particular survey.
And then in terms of the respondents, you, it was like December second through um, yeah, we're okay. They said that a portion of them were by phone use and then what was the other?
Online. Yeah, we conducted an online panel that, that we're, um, invited bu- by a, a, a select email distribution.
And where, where did that email, I mean, like where'd that email list come from? I mean, what was that? Was that a voter's email list or?
Yes, i- it, it's called a voter file. And so we work with, um, and this is just kind of backend stuff, but I, I certainly don't mind sharing. Um, there are a number of vendors that compile basically a voter file of, um, of, uh, of residents of any political jurisdiction. And so that voter file in some cases will contain, whether it's a landline, uh, uh, cell phone, um, a verified email address. Sometimes we will do a text to web format. Um, and so, yes, it comes from, uh, i- in essence, a voter file. That's right.
And then just get a sense of the, the sixty plus or the four, the four on board. Um, where, what percentage of those were a part of that, that online panel versus being reached by phone?
The, the online, th- there should have been a roughly e- even distribution. So if, if there were in essence, you, your, your, your four of fours, your highest propensity are about forty four percent of, of the survey sample. It would have made up somewhere around forty four percent of both, both collection modes. Um, both collection modes typically, I, 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 I like to hit the quotas on, on, on both modes. So it would have been roughly forty, you know, five percent with both modes.
You said a couple of times, I think, use the phrase sharpen the pencil. Can you talk about an auditorium proposal? What do you mean by that? Does that mean message around it differently or maybe come up with some real solid numbers and what benefits an auditorium upgrade would entail or just kind of? How do you sharpen your pencil on it?
When I, wh- when I think about sharpening the pencil, uh, I guess that's my shorthand for, you know, how, how do you do apply thoughtfulness to that particular proposal that conveys that you are getting the most out of the dollar, uh, for the taxpayer and delivering the most benefit. Um, to be able to articulate how the, how the, uh, uh, community benefits. Uh, to be able to, um, you know, as accurately as you can, uh, convey a cost. And, and to demonstrate that it's a community need. Um, and so I, when, when you've got, when you've got, and, and I think we clearly picked up on it, your community, you, you've got skeptics. And, but those skeptics can be won over. I mean, look at it this way, you're, the, the people that did not trust the school district to spend the money wise, that you still got thirty eight percent support on a bond levy from that group of folks. And so what, what they're, what they're looking for is that the district um, uh, really put thought into the proposal and that they are maximizing, they're getting the very most for the dollar that they're asking from a taxpayer and that just conveying that. And so a- and, and I'm not saying that you haven't done that or that you're not going to do that. I'm just saying that, that there, there, there are some indicators. Uh, I think that voters are looking for that the, the district really put some thought into it. Um, al- also on the, you know, kind of the sharpen the pencil. I mean, we, we obviously tested the, the soccer, uh, the soccer field. Um, and it was upside down. And so, you know, wi- with respect to, you know, quote unquote, you know, you can sharpen the pencil. Is there some, is there something else that you can do with it? Uh, to give it more appeal. Um, I don't know what that is, but i- is there, is there something else that you can bring into it or some other benefit that you can convey or something like that? That can, uh, sort of create that, uh, you know, sort of where people say, okay, that, that, that sounds reasonable to me. So that, that's kind of what, and I think you also need to know, you know, you're gonna have to have a sober enough approach to that to understand that, um, you know, you, you might see it as a priority, but the, the voters might not, and to be realistic about some of that.
I, w- one idea that we, as we were going over this initially, that we brainstormed is like, for example, if we, we wanted to keep the soccer field on, it would be to say we do this if we get the matching statement. So then it's, you know, we heard you, it's not a priority. If we get it, great, we'll do it. If we don't, we won't, and we'll focus on the priorities that we've heard from the community. So, you know, that, that's how I'm interpreting and, and our conversations with J L is, and then also um, you know, being intentional about the communication, like what the buckets are saying. You know, cause it didn't come up about, well, what about potential safety needs in the auditorium with the way steps ended up picked up and those sorts of things. So so it's also being intentional about how you connect it with the message. Um, and what messaging you use for that.
Yeah, the question's very vague. I'm just saying, you know, upgraded auditorium. Well, what's that mean? And I'd like the other question, how many people actually knew what was in the buildings? Well, most of them didn't.
Right.
So, yeah, communicating that well, I, I guess it's kind of the bottom line there. How do you demonstrate the benefit of an upgraded auditor?
And did I hear him say that we were, that it now falls on us to do the PR to get this passed, which might be setting up tables outside Los Rallos, Fred Myers and talking to people about?
I mean, there, there's a number of ways that you can approach it. Um, a lot of districts and some of our former districts, um, so like I'm, uh, I can't, you know, by virtue of my role, I have to, it has to be factual. So on district time, we have to present facts, but you can, what you typically do is you do a political action. Uh, and so you solicit contributions and even, you know, in, in school district bond cases, often even like the union will contribute and that sort of thing. So you can get the promotional materials out there. And you can, with that group, they're the ones saying, vote yes. Uh, whereas district staff during district time can say, here's the facts. Um, and actually, I'm like, and I think board members can, by virtue of being elected officials, you can say, you know, we're in support of this for yes. So it's just, it's threading that, but the primary thing would be like a political action group committee, uh, that would be. Uh, you know, often it's, it's staff, community members, you know, those, those strong supporters, people with connections to it. I mean, obviously with like the auditorium question, that would be, you know, you've got a very diehard contingent of folks who are like saying this is a big deal. So they're, they're probably likely willing to put some energy behind promoting the support of that.
Um, so looking at realistically in terms of, you know, marketing. I think you said the percentage of that four, four group in our county or in our voting district, I guess, percentage of people that actually vote are over sixty, that, that's the highest proportion. Is that correct? Is that what you're saying? And what was that percentage from our elections again?
It was over fifty percent.
And, and we surveyed about four, we talked about forty percent of that.
Fifty six point seven.
Or fifty, so fifty six of that group, that you're saying, we surveyed that many?
That, that was the percentage of respondents, um, in that, in that age cohort, yes.
Do we have, do you have, or do we, I mean, I know we can, cause my back, this is my background's in marketing, but do you have the resources, facilities to more specifically target that age group or further survey if that was something we wanted to do or to further inquire and get some more ideas of what we're going to be, um, facing? Cause you know, in terms of energy levels. Um, I did, quite a few years ago, when we were looking at this for, I guess we were act, and it's interesting to see this change because when we were looking at this before, we were looking at the fact that we needed to expand, you know, out this way. Um, that's not even a conversation now, um, which I understand, um. But looking at marketing wise and to our resources of time, or it's easy to rally parents and students, but they're not the voters.
Um, that's right.
Typically come out. So, um, do you have those kind of resources if we wanted to further inquire of what we're dealing with? I mean, cause obviously having a better idea of what their perception of us not managing money well would be a very helpful one to know.
Well, you, you have, I guess we have the resources to target. Let, let me just tell you this in, you know, modern day polling. Um, the easiest demographic in the world to poll is the sixty plus, um. To be quite frank, I mean, they're clamoring to take surveys. And so, um, yes, w- we could probably, uh, get very deep uh, into that community. I mean, the, the challenge of where we're all right now is getting eh, the, the younger age cohorts to, um, uh, meaningfully participate in these surveys. But the older age cohorts now tha- that, that's not a challenge at all. Um, i- it now just so happens to be that that is precisely the age cohort that, that is, in my opinion, uh, on which school district fortunes rest across this state. So I do think that you have an ability to get deeper insights into uh, that age demographic, which I think has really kind of holds the keys on on local school funding. So it's just, it's a coincidence because I can't think of any other. Um, you know, survey project that is, you know, is, is so reliant on older voters and, and, uh, that, and yet that is what we, we find is the easiest sample to actually attain.
Thank you.
So, yeah, or organizations like J Ls, they, they will do those next steps in terms of targeted campaigns and that sort of stuff. If a district selects to, to work with, and a lot of us, Hermiston did, um, kind of multiple steps. So you do the pre, to kind of get the lay of the land and saying, do we want to? And then they can help support, um, that, you know, getting down to, okay, Jay, you need to call these five people. Uh, you know, that sort of thing. And here's your script.
Sure. Any talk or any consideration about when an appropriate election might be?
I am personally, um, a fan of May elections. Um, I just, I like May elections far more than I like November elections.
Yeah, I'm just political.
So, you know, not this same, but the following, right?
Also, I guess my question is, is this, is this May too ambitious?
Yes. Yeah, cause we've got I mean, the, the data's great in one sense, but we definitely have a big hole there, in my opinion, in terms of the the disconnect with that who consistently votes in our community. It's so much. And, and, you know, they So that would be something that we would want to really do some good grassroots work around. What if we were? You, what's the deadline? Like if we were to shoot for May, a year for May? When would we need to have that information on?
Yeah, what would be your timeline?
Uh, yes, it's February is, is really late February is the filing, I want to say. We, we looked it up.
It's the same period, you're gonna run wrongs too.
Yeah, yeah, you would just see.
Yeah, I'm certain about it both, I'm assuming, at least just the signatures and.
There's a cost to it.
Yeah, you do a resolution saying we're gonna put the bond measure on there and then it gets filed and there's parts of the process, like you have to vet the language or, or it's strongly recommended that you do, that you're not in emergency, having, you know, getting the language in there.
I was thinking that we need the timeline.
Yeah.
Not just that timeline, but everything going backwards because otherwise we'll be sitting here a year from now going up. Makes two plus.
Two plus, yeah.
And so it's always
Well, yeah, well, but
the flip flops
But as you follow your, on a proposal, right? And maybe a couple of iterations of survey.
The, the actual campaign time, it shouldn't be very long because of
Right.
the awareness. However, the behind the scenes, you have to start a whole year. I did have one other question. I, when you were showing those numbers of fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, and I think it was two hundred. Um, what size bond, like if, if fifty dollars, huh, what is that?
What does a ten million dollars take?
Yeah.
Yeah, what? E D and I, what's that? Yeah, so, um, our, our previous bond, what, what was the amount in two thousand? Fourteen million, uh, and that was about eighty cents. So obviously it's a, that was pointing some amount years ago, a smaller tactic instead of that. So our initial estimates, um, working with the, the bond consultants is um, ten million would be somewhere in the
Thirty three.
Thirty three cent. And another consideration that, that, you know, I want to put out there, I think we kind of talked about, cause when we were first doing it, we were saying, well, should it be you know, smaller time, those sorts of things. And so I think a real appealing approach that balances that you can keep that number really low, um, the tax rate for thousands, you do, uh, you, you build in a step to that. So that might make it like thirty six instead of thirty three, but then in ten years it drops. And so that gives you either a drop or some capacity of that time that you can plan on.
So from a taxpayer's perspective, and, and I'm gonna say, maybe over sixty who's on a second, you know, they're, they're looking at fifty, they're gonna divide by twelve. So that, I guess, that thirty three cents, what is that?
Thirty three cents per thousand, depends on the value.
So.
Yeah, they're saying, so what, what that was a three hundred thousand dollar house. It's a couple hundred per year. Ninety fifty is what I, I, yeah.
Okay, so somebody that has owns a home for two hundred and fifty thousand, they're looking at.
Three hundred thousand is in recent two.
Okay, so twenty dollars a month.
Yeah. And that would kind of come out in the messaging of, you know, is that how the, the, the challenges that we have to be careful, this is getting a little into the weeds is the, the, the measure is not for the rate per thousand. That's, that's a, that's a best estimate and typically you get it pretty close and you want to try and estimate.
Buy those big numbers.
Right. It's, it's, it's a ten million dollar bond. It's a twelve million dollar bond. And then that gets calculated out. And so that can fluctuate depending on, I mean, if if the new housing development goes in, that number can go down uh, on individuals, taxes, those sorts of things. So, um, but yeah, so that's just, and, and typically you say this is gonna be around, you know, whatever that is for thousand, but this is a, a, a potential selling point is that it's, uh, you know, less than half of the last bond tax rate.
I got a quick question. Um, where, was there any identifiers that, uh, located where these, these, these individuals live within the district? Um, cause we tend to have a very, um, favorable community within the city of Brookings. And then when you get into the, um, yeah, incorporated areas, it, it's a, it's just a giant drop off of support in tax measures. Um, and our district encompasses
Um, and our district encompasses a pretty balanced population of both, yeah. So was that factored in at all?
Um, we did not, we did not do geography um in the sample, however, we can probably go back in the raw data. And uh parse that out, so uh I'm gonna, I'll, I'll see if my uh staff can review that for where. Uh it came from, and see if we can add that in at the uh end as sort of a, a geographic um uh cross tab. So, no, we did not collect it or ask it. But the um uh, the raw data should indicate uh where the response came from, and we might be able to aggregate that.
Um, and then this is one other question I could think of that, you know, I'm just thinking about my seventy five year old mother lives in Harvard, so she fits the category. But she would support the tax, and her questions would be like, okay, so you're applying ten million, is it unrealistic for us to? Say that we've done our homework and. Get rotten bids, or, you know, like, we, we're not going into this blind, we're not just throwing a number out, but we've. Done enough work to know, okay, this is what it's gonna cost.
Yeah, and that, and that's why, that, for me, that's as big a reason as the questions about the data, is why it's too short of timeline, because. The numbers we have in ten million are, I mean, they're decent estimates, talking with local contractors and that sort of thing, but that's all that are. Uh right now, but yes, you would want to get that fairly precise, and certainly you'd want to have that be. You use a higher number, so if they say it's gonna be between three and four million for that, plan on four, because you're much better off saying. Hey, you know, we can go down the list, or we're not even gonna um, you know, collect the whole thing, because. You know, we're really gonna get it done cheaper, that doesn't often happen, but you really want to avoid, you know, overspending. Right, and some districts really got caught with the whole, with supply chain issue where. They had done their work, and even with that, you know, and the cost of lumber, or what, five times as high, they couldn't do the projects that, you know, they were quoted.
So, there's no, no legal, legal issues that will get in the way of, like, let's say we wanted to. We're looking at the future, and we want to get a couple, couple bids on what it was due to our HVAC, we can do that.
Yeah, no, the only time it becomes that, that it gets locked down is what's in the measures, what you've got to. You can't spend your money on something not in the, we can consider anything, and we can do the legwork. It's, it's gonna be a little bit of a question of allocating resources, uh you know, potentially, and you know, if we want to continue working with organizations like this, is prioritizing. Like, okay, what might pose possible? Uh but yeah, we can, we can get, and you can solicit bids and, and say, okay, what's this gonna be? Um, to get a better sense of that.
What about, you mentioned something about getting matching funds, something?
So there's, there's, the state has, I can't remember what the acronym is, but Austin, Austin Grant, uh and it's matching funds up to. Was it four one, four, four million, um, you know, so if, if you get less than four, if you ran the bond for three, you could get up to three. Uh and it's a prioritized list. And, but the, 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 right now, I mean, it's a function of how many are going out for bonds, how many are successful with them, and then that money's giving up. And so, for example, Beaverton passed a big giant one, um which is, you know, I. Three quarters of a billion dollars, and they got the extra four million because the money was there. Um, there's a little bit of talk of saying, okay, that, that really. Yeah, uh, but, but that, that can certainly be, you know, for a district like ours, and then you know, that's a big boost. The challenge is, it's, you know, we, we can have a sense going into it, but it's not guaranteed until. Most likely, it won't be guaranteed until.
But, but like I said, you could have language says, but this project.
We get this, and that that's kind of, you know, it's state money, but it's free money in terms of law, so it's not an additional taxpayer burden. And so that's kind of where, as we were talking about, the idea where, yeah, the field's probably a no go. You know, if it were something that we wanted to consider, that would be a potential avenue, saying, hey, we heard you, it's not on the bond, but if we get this extra money. We're gonna do it this way.
By waiting the bond, is that, give us a better chance of getting that extra money, or?
Yeah, it's match, so the bond has to pass, so, so each, if, if you're considering, you submit, you say, throw your hat in, which I think we've done. Just, you know, we said, we might, and so you tell the state that way, you're on the list, and then if your bond passes, and so, so they further refine now. Here's our priority list, so if you're at the top of the list, you're like, you're gonna get it.
Right.
Um, but you can, you can kind of look at the recent history, you can look, and we're, we're fairly low on the list, but again. You know, there's that pot of money, and if all these folks don't, you're at the top of the list, and um.
Yeah, where are we long?
It's, it's a combination, well, it's social economic, uh there's that, um, I can't remember the other, you remember the other? Wildfires for, yeah, and, and there's also tax base. That means there's higher rates of poverty. We're, we're not compared to a lot of other districts. Compared to Beaverton, we aren't, but. Yeah, those, those sorts of things, and I think that tax base might be, I don't know, what's the available tax base, you get these little small towns. There's like, there's no tax base to, to get enough money to build it, so now, there is talk. Um, and again, it's just talk of, of looking at revised app, and, and providing support to districts whose society, they just can't get something passed, and even looking at the. That capital formula saying, that is it really fair in the big scheme of things? If Beaverton still gets their four million bucks out of a three quarter of a billion dollar grant? When that money really should be divided more me, and it just so happened that, you know, basically no one else went out, or a few enough that. That lots is divided, so there's talk of that, but at least, you know, there is that potential. Uh resource, Milton got it, I think, but Hermiston got it, and so, and you, you do have a good sense as it gets closer, whether or not. You're gonna get.
I see who's actually on the ballot.
Uh, question is, did she, how did we identify these priority questions? How were those, how were those created? Is that a community survey, or was that just?
No, that was an ongoing staff input, and, and from Jess, and that sort of thing, it's just like, hey. You know, what are the needs, what do we see, um, and so that's like. They think of the floor, that's where the floor of the gym came from, saying, and we really wanted that done, and that thought it was gonna be done, it's a high use area. And the seismic did everything less, but that, and so it's just really been, you know, an informal process of gathering that. Um, and then in addition to the big staff survey that we did, that we heard those questions.
So, question, um, is it James?
J L.
J L.
But it is James.
Yeah, well, I, I just read the top of your, your computer screen there. Do you, uh? Do you, do you see any common, um? What do you see as, as high approval of things in, in, in rural areas that, that, that rural communities really get behind? Uh, in terms of priorities, do, do you ever see any commonalities there?
Yeah, and, and I, and I characterize it as meat and potatoes.
Okay.
Um, they, voters don't mind fixing stuff. Um, that, that's why my number one recommendation here is um protecting the community's investments. That I've just noticed throughout the years, that, that just, that is just true year in and year out, and so. Uh, projects and the HVAC is really in the sweet spot there, those types of things, people have no problem. Even in, you know, of my words, stingy, um, communities, uh people generally are A okay with that stuff. Because they, they, they want their kids to have um, uh. Good learning environments, and, you know, they, they, they shouldn't be. You know, uh, you know, should have, shouldn't have issues with uh water, or bad air temperature, airflow, lighting, you know, that kind of stuff, so. Um, I, my, my observation of rural communities really is more meat and potato focused. Um, you know, and I always say this, that there's, there's this notion that, you know, there's. You hear, I know from a lot, a lot of parents, and me too, because I was a football dad, and, and my kids did all the extracurriculars and, and all that. That you, uh, you know, you want the. The grandstands, and, and you want the artificial turf, and you want the track resurfaced and stuff like that, and it, it just really, it has such a hard time passing. Um, and so, uh, e- even in communities that are really sports oriented, so I, I, again, I'll go back to my original. Original answer of the meat and potatoes.
Oh, is it, how do you, like, I'm just curious, um. We have, we're a pretty trade heavy community, and if, like, vocational uh program expansion. That kind of stuff ever uh plays favorable into these when you're adding, you know. But yeah, you know, when you're adding uh some kind of a service.
At a metal shop, not a soccer field.
Yeah, people, uh, yeah, I, I view career tech. As sort of the service extension of meat and potatoes, um, and so, I, I, there is a high likelihood, if you can demonstrate need. And, you know, serving kids in the community and make the argument that you can keep. You give your kids a future, or, or keep them local, you know, one of those things, yes, uh very saleable.
Our, our biggest obstacle would be that that was the original bond, was the expansion of the vocational system. Which some of it got reduced for athletics, uh, long term, but it is such a big need.
Well, I think it would be, in terms of the, we're looking at the population. I mean, they're struggling to find somebody to do their plumbing, they're like electrical, they can't find anybody.
And, and, and some things that you can do that districts have done to, to help with that kind of trust rebuilding, saying. As part of this, we're gonna have a, a bond accountability advisory panel made up of community members. Which will, you know, as things progress, it's like, here's where the dollars are going, here's where the, so they get those updates, they're able to. You know, one, see it, and then be that fond of the community, and saying, you know, we, this is what was put in the bond. This group is assuring that that's what the dollars are being spent on, I mean, even though we have to, that's been a really big trust, but Hermiston used that group very successfully. Um, of just saying, hey, we're gonna meet together quarterly, here's the update, here's what the money, and that also can help if. You know, because things might come in, that, well, this costs more. And, and maybe you're gonna have to make a hard decision, if you've got that group, then there's, there was that kind of built in. You know, we want your advice on how to prioritize this decision, because we can't do everything, worst case, that we set out to do, because. You know, the, the cost, export, and dramatic, so it can serve a number of purposes. And one of them just being trusted, that, you know, we're willing to put it on the line, and have your eyes looking at the dollars as they go through, and make sure. They're, they're going through what we said they were, and what you said you wanted.
I'm thinking about the older population in New Orleans, where, I mean, by far, they've, they've always spent a large percentage of purpose, we are the highest. The entire state has.
Second poorest town in the United States, really, yeah, there's only one county in Florida.
So, it, it to me, I, I recall. It, nothing else, nothing, and you had to pastor operate, and so literally the school closed for a couple months, because. Taxpayers weren't willing to even pay for operations, and um. And so, because those people weren't vested, they didn't have children, or grandchildren, where they retired from California, and, you know, it's different when. Our generations, their, their parents are there, they care, um, but I'm trying to think of how we could um. Tie some of these facilities that you're just talking about, like I think of the Zoe gym, I think of the, from our school. Those kind of things that can be used by the community at large, I mean, I realize school would take priority, but I think of the Zoe gym, I think of the. Craft fairs and the Christmas things, and that floor is an issue, if you've been there first floor, it's foreign sports, um. And then I, um, I'm thinking of, there's really not a great place here for performing arts type stuff, so we did an improvement there, so it's likely to target. Those people would.
And I, I remembered, I apologize, it was probably about four. A group of individuals in the community, and we walked around, and we specifically looked at the. Um, we called, from the old redo, the. The auditorium, yeah. Yeah, um, they were, they were on board. This idea of being able to, you know, in smaller communities, with have. Having the ability to be able to use those facilities, that, we quote, would be, provide us the value to them. But the Art Product Center, I know, and I don't know if we're gathering that, it's like. Does that mean we have to build it on our property, and we have it all inside?
I think some of that research kind of went on, these conversations, could the school district have a bond that would help build a swimming pool, that would be owned by a different entity? I think there's some problems with ownership.
Boy.
But, but, I don't know, maybe you could have a partnership, or could the school district build a performing arts center, but have another group maybe help outfit it with. The right lights, the technology or something, I don't know.
And, and the other product, I mean. If we had a facility that should have. I know it's crazy, I know it's absolutely crazy, but we would ask by a lot, that elderly group, they would be in.
They were.
From what, for the up by center?
They were our biggest opposition.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, in getting that passed, but. The, what I'm trying to say, what I'm trying to think of is, is, is there a priority we can tag? That is a win-win in terms of, it's a, it's a value to the community, but it also has the propensity to bring. Some of those students that we're losing to homeschool, because they won't get that offering outside of that, like, and so a lot of that is your hands on learning. App, offerings. So we can increase our student population.
Online school kids, that's the only.
That's true, I, I know a couple families that just, just for.
And that would be a win for our, our community, and if the community, I don't know, we obviously can't produce plumbers and electricians, but we can. Produce uh ones that are certified, that, but like, I'm not, I'm not, but, we'll know that.
Yeah, they begin their.
They begin the process, yeah.
I mean, this, yeah, some of them, I mean, this is a, this is pie in the sky, definitely not like, but. For instance, um, three of the kids that just graduated that work for me. Um, are all leaving to beauty school, right? Um, and, you know. And, and that's a fifteen hundred hour certification, right, which is a big deal, Barbara is saying, my daughter really wants to do it, but she's. Transfers, but those are kids that, you know, would be, you know, here. Uh beneficial, you know, they, they probably in the community, um, learning a living wage. Here, instead of going to Jesus School, right, something like that, so I'm just, I'm trying to brainstorm, is there? Ideas that, like, the low hanging fruit, obviously, it's not even a. Or lifeguard, lifeguard certification takes sixteen hours, and, and it gives a kid a job every summer, you know? And when they go to college, get in their little rec rooms, they walk in with everybody across lifeguard, and they automatically have jobs. Um, so, I feel like our community, if I get asked a lot, it's, it's, hey, when can?
Well, what kind of problem, you know, just listed five or six things that were surveyed, you know, projects. How much do we need to refine that or change, or how do we know about that?
Or expand, I mean, I'm thinking, yeah, it's like, uh, Go Keel, yeah. But Go Keel did, I mean, it's kind of their, it's their all school plus a whole bunch of different trades. Uh, that they, they put together, I remember it was a year or two ago. Remember, they might have, like, that's the quality there, challenges, those are bigger tickets, so then, you know, you're, you're talking. Maybe double a ten million dollar bond, and then where's that, the bigger you get. The less life, the less, how can we be, what's the most strategic, keeping it small? Enough that you can't, because I, I really, my, my personal professional opinion is, you know, rather than doing a ten year, is do a step down. Because, you know, we can say, all right, this might be set us up pretty well for the next step, and then you have capacity, if you need it, for the subsequent. No, 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 it'd be, it'd be a twenty year, but a step down, so that, for example, what we missed our opportunities a couple, two years ago, then the old bond, we paid it off. That's the perfect time, because you say, hey, your taxes will stay the same, and we get two to two schools. Um, and so that's, that's the optimum time, with the planned step down, that gives you a window there in ten years, just because. Right, well, because it's just like, it's almost impossible to do that unless you're building. Right, well, because it's just like, it's almost impossible to do that unless you're building and building.
You know, I mean, and and we'd have to do a uh an assessment to see if there's low hanging fruit, right, like they, there's a facility structure. For mechanics, but it needs to be um improved, um, you know, things like that.
Yeah, I mean, I think some certainly some like updates to what we've got could be included in that one, could be, I think, so like particularly, you know, the the. Revitalizing the welding program, um, I I'm sure you can give us quite a list.
There's not a mechanic in town that's not looking for somebody to work for them, you know, that's a lost art.
Before we get it, not just to be the classes, but to be the certifications, that's what I.
Well, but there's, I mean, that's what high school success and measure ninety eight. And in that, there there is a, you know, obviously the dollars have to be prioritized, but there's dollars that have to be used for just that. So they're not general fund dollars, saying, it's the, it's the, you know, career and technical education connection, so. And that's, that's what the end of doing is, working with that money, saying, okay, we're going to rebuild our welding program. And putting the resources into that, to help support that, and probably the biggest thing that's with our community members is staff. So if we can get a program that sticks and a staff member that sticks, we can really do some last of work. Uh, and and a grant program can be built that needs the certification, those programs are are typically. Uh easily connectable to community college, so you have community college credit and or that certification through that connection.
Um, yeah, for the advanced. Yeah, for sure.
So I think, I think one thing. Think it would be helpful to get a better idea from that age group. You know, asking some more detailed questions.
Okay, so I wanna try and just get some summary info, so one thing I heard earlier was really. The 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 agreement with J L is saying, what was May, and then this May is just too soon, so looking at May of. Uh, and then I even said, then what does that look like, hoping back to this in terms of the work that needs to be laid out? Um, so kind of backwards mapping that, more details on the the four, four sixty plus.
Now, well, real quick, sorry, um, J L. This November is an off election year, is that right? Yeah, that that also could be.
Yes, one thing that was. If we do it in May, then we've got in our best. He on the ground are gonna be staff, parents, teacher, you know, anybody that, it'll be a lot easier to be communicating with them and. They're physically here versus. Check out.
Yeah, okay.
So backwards mapping, more details on some of the the self populations, so the big question was those sixty plus four voters and the question about. Um, J L, you said you were gonna see if you could mine the kind of the county or out of town and incorporated versus in town.
Sure thought about that question, so I just had to communicate with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go back into the raw data on that.
Like, if you don't need to worry about the city limits people who would not worry about them.
Well, and 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 when you're targeting that campaign, I think you can do actual targeting information, right? And so you're gonna communicate probably something a little bit different to our folks than we may communicate to the city people who live in in the city. Um, and it's also the 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 no, no, no's are like, okay, fine, we're the the time and energy is probably not completely. Like, you know, well spent there, and it's more those people who.
But I just try to think a lot of people, me, I have a post office box in city level, and so I work in the city, I live out of the city, so I. I would get into that.
Well. But the other piece of this is, yes, if if they're, if they're, if they mine this information, then they find out that. They actually solicited, uh, you know, sixty percent of their response were from the city. Well, then we know, we're gonna have a lot more opposition than we're actually seeing on those, on that data, as soon as you cross the bridge.
Yeah.
You know, so.
And there is a two way to get that, once you cross that.
If they know they get the president, they don't realize.
Yeah, and I I think asking some more detailed questions is not gonna hurt us, because getting a better sense of that community and how they perceive us is gonna be. Good information, no matter what, in terms of community relations.
J L, you kept referring to the four or four, what, I I guess I'm, I have a hard time thinking that three or four isn't equally important. Um, I mean, I I get a regular voter versus a non regular voter, but I also picture people just sometimes flaking or just. Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, you were looking at kind of the strong versus the somewhat. It is that three of, I mean, I'm just wondering if you look at a combination of those two, I think that still shows a regular voter that, um. I mean, I I get four or four, like somebody who just thinks election day is the most exciting day of the year. All they're also over sixty, um, but, um, but I just, I don't know, I can think of over the years that I've missed a couple, and it's just literally been that. I just faced it, or I was out of town and left, I'm valid, all my debts. Um, so anyway, I I just don't think those are non voters if they voted three out of the last four.
I I agree with it.
Oh, I totally agree, I, I mean, but you have to, you know, we define high propensity typically as three of fours and four fours.
Okay.
But I, i- if you're contemplating an election. Um, sometime other than a May primary or a November general, um, I think sort of the the kind of the. That that four or four becomes even more important, because I I hear you thinking, okay, how about November of twenty three? Well, that that's, that's not gonna be any validated, so that's, you're gonna rely on a very motivated, which I would, you know, heartily defend that the the four or four characterization. Or the 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 four or four being the voter you wanna target, but if you're looking at a May pro. Primary, a general election primary, then yes, a three or four is going to be, I I would say equally as high propensity.
And sorry, just curious, okay.
And that may will be a primary. You know, May of twenty four will be.
Um, besides, of course. Targeting that group and getting a little bit more data from them, I mean, besides asking, you know. We don't wanna just ask that same group's question, you know, do they strongly agree or disagree with the way to just expense money, we want to be able to ask. Then, when they say they don't agree, why? Maybe we'd want to know the, what other questions would we be asked?
Are are you asking what what additional questions could you ask on a on a subsequent survey?
Yeah, where we're targeting specific voting.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you, I agree that you would, you could uh potentially add some verbatims. Um, around uh operation and performance around, um. Why you perceive, you know, how the district spends its money, um, uh, some verbatims around the. Um, uh, initial ballot, so, you know, why are you voting yes, why are you voting no? If if there was a subsequent survey, I'd probably, I would probably put it together more like an actual benchmark. Where you do what's called an inform, an informed ballot, which is, you would have the initial question, you would have some, um. Uh, so maybe some project specific questions, and agreed it, but you'd be for focus more on messaging. And then you would ask the question again, after you had gone through um some message tests. To see if your, if your message test actually moved voters one way or another, and if so, who? Um, so I I would construct, th- this survey was constructed like, I I would call a priority survey. Um, any subsequent work, I would probably construct more like a benchmark, uh, where you are, get, you're you're basically going through. Uh, you might test other priorities that you didn't make the cut on this first survey, but I would probably lead through. A sequence of message tests to get to an informed ballot and then ask the question again. And then you would add a verbatim on that informed, because we you'd wanna know is whether something they heard. Um, along the way resonated with them and was responsible for them, you know, subsequently, you know, uh, voting how they voted. So that that's probably how I would construct a a follow on survey.
And J L, is there, you know, with with conversation of a possible, you know, May of twenty four. Is there any like kind of optimal timeline range to do this, or is there a risk of like, let's say we wanted to do it? In a couple of months, is that too soon, or has it been too much time from the survey before digging more into the work, before kind of?
Year old.
Yeah, year old data sort of thing, so is is.
Yeah, the the information would be stale.
Yeah.
Um, I I, i- if you're looking at May of twenty four, I I wouldn't, I I wouldn't revisit this again until next fall.
Okay, so so earlier in the fall, again, and there's still plenty of work to do, but just get that more precise data, because then even the. Campaigns and stuff aren't gonna be until winter anyway.
Yeah, the work that we can do is, we're applying tuning that passage.
So everything else, I mean.
Yes, it is.
Are we gonna get lost in greater?
I wonder if that's helpful to have more of the voters out, because if our high propensity voters are the ones, all people who both know.
Too negative.
Yeah, then you'd rather have those.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I think I think February, May was probably.
We're we're yelling about auditoriums.
It first went some pretty calm.
So, we could do some groundwork to better by tune our message to, and then you guys could do what you suggested. Um, in the fall, and then we could, from there. But realistically, we'd want to have a pack committee, we'd wanna be ready to go, hit the ground running, basically.
Well, th- there there's a fair amount, you know, I'm not trying to create additional work for anybody.
Yeah.
But there's a fair amount that, you know, a an a a an entity can do to sort of till the soil. Um, you know, I've consulted on uh these campaigns. Um, and the difference sometimes between you lose one time, you come back to the drawing board, first of all, you sharpened your pencil. Because you learned what there was to learn, that when people said no, maybe something was too expensive, extravagant, what have you. But it's it's often more common that you didn't properly demonstrate need. And what happened, and I'll give you an example, uh, for the the new uh police building that. Uh, we did the campaign on here in Salem, and that is, um, the the local P D. Um, finally, uh, you know, they kind of said, look, they took pictures, like, this is what we deal with. Uh, this is, this is how our quarters are cramped, you know, we've got the, um, um. You know, various units all crammed together, you have the dispatch actors in these quarters, and and look, it was visually stunning. And, you know, it was, it was sort of a lightbulb thing, and and they 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 could send it out, you know, under the auspices of the city. And just say, you know, we're we're thinking about doing this to address these needs, and they had they had pictures and whatnot. And, you know, it was the difference between losing with forty seven percent and then coming back and winning with sixty two. And and that is, you know, you can, you can do some work under the auspice, you know, I wouldn't have, it would be pre-packed, so you wouldn't want the pack form. You'd be doing it before you, um, uh, you know, voted to basically authorize the ballot question. To basically, you know, show or demonstrate some need. Um, and and kind of capture people's imagination that way, that that is, that is certainly, um. One tact that I would take that I I think is pretty effective. The other thing that I mentioned here in my recommendations, I I tend to think, you know, the district probably has some real. Success stories from the previous bond in terms of, you know, did the projects come in on budget? Uh, where they delivered timely, um, you know, did 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 they, did they produce good outcomes, or is there some human? Human interest, you know, and you you could profile some of that stuff. Because, again, I go back to, um, the the big, the biggest indicator in my mind was really how people viewed the financial management of the district, and I I. Think that there's just some low hanging fruit that you can do, probably doing stuff that you take for granted. But people wanna hear it, uh, you know, we delivered all the projects we said we would, uh, didn't cost anybody a penny more. And, you know, it was on time, all that, and, you know, just that message repeated, and you start to win converts, because the greatest. Indicator of success or uh approval of the bond measure was, you know, how they viewed your financial management, so tell some good stories. Um, and and use some bandwidth to do that.
Yeah, I I wonder if something like that would be like the things we've been able to do with yesterday dollars and leverage dollars. Uh, P D and I went to a robbery right before the holidays, and we talked about the S I A costs. And so it's being intentional about just making sure, because I mean, these are, un- unless you're in it and are in the system, and even folks in the system. Don't understand that, so saying, we've been able to do all these great things. Uh, and I think potentially the most correct foundation is is like with yesterday cases, because. Those are infrastructure things that we would have wanted to have on bond, that we took care of. Out of these one fine dollars to maximize the benefit from that, we did most of the H VAC in the districts, so really what we're looking at is the centralized systems. Up the angles, the vast majority of classrooms have new splitting ones in them that we did with yesterday, the water tanks and plumbing. Those sorts of things, and and some of it also like with the staff, uh, when I review the staff data. You know, when you, when you dig into that and they're talking about our facility being in bad shape. My interpretation more of it's more just like, it mentions like the toilet button. So these aren't infrastructure things, these are just like, we need to update them, be mindful of that, there's wires hanging here and those are. Well, it is, but we actually, we, I mean, not necessarily, I mean, we just did a bunch over break. And and case pool got their bathroom ready, then, so again, that's showing that, you know, where we have the opportunity with a few dollars, we're putting it into those priorities. And so I think certainly the staff and then bringing that out of like, and and we use the initial S I A dollars, so. Uh, probably redid the high school bathrooms, that sort of thing, so, so I I think there are success stories we can paint and showing how. We're trying to maximize the dollars that we've got, um, you know, for the kids and and giving these things done and not.
I I agree, I think it also. I know for, uh, me, when I moved into this school district for twenty two years now. There, at that point, I don't know, when does this build?
When there's this new, this latest box that was built early two thousands.
And this new building was here?
How about the bond, it was right around two thousand, it was ninety miles.
This, the the thing that we want, yeah, the. It's not, it's pretty common knowledge to move in this building, because the skyline is. Unknown, and so I think, in addition, I love what you just said about. How the government gave us this extra money and we were responsible, we're trying to. Use it in a very efficient manner, that's a great idea, but also, just sharing, this is what we learned from the past.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we. We, because, you know, some people are gonna, some people are gonna remember those things, right? So. I can see some people asking, well, when we're.
Since this is gonna be in the main.
I agree. I appreciate this information, it's very helpful.
Alright, thank you, J L.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, you're very welcome.
All right. Any questions on this topic? Okay, no worries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Yeah, is the county gonna do something with that or?
Yeah, that's. Like this may would have been perfect, right? Yeah, so that would have passed. That passed in the. There would be nothing. We wouldn't be on heat now. With somebody on the ballot. Cause that ended with just being two no's. Cause they're like.
No, no.
Yeah, that would just be a question you can ask the county, or they won't be that bad. Ask them the things.
Something that.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, so we know.
Could be, the library district, I don't think. Number of districts put some big old bond on the.
Well, that was really good information.
Yeah. All right, yeah, I guess we'll recess our. Public session here.